Director Whitfield, we have student representatives not here today either. And but we do have Superintendent Shawn Woodward and district staff as well as members of the community. Members of the public can log into the regular board meeting using the Zoom link attached to tonight's agenda that is found on the board docs website. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to tonight's meeting. We are happy to have you join us. All comments during tonight's meeting are audio recorded and will be available online on our website. This is in addition to the written minutes. Please understand that while it may appear the board is moving quickly on important matters. There have been previous discussions on these issues, either in earlier meetings or in board workshops, which are also open public meetings. Each director had has has had ample time to study the issues, ask appropriate questions and obtain satisfactory answers from the superintendent, his staff or through outside research. Those wishing to address the board during public comment must turn in a public comment form prior to the start of the meeting at 4:00 P. M. Any form submitted after the meeting has started will be held for the next meeting to address the board at that time. Moving on to agenda item 1.05, we have approval of the agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated November 3rd, 2025.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the Monroe School District Board of Directors approve the agenda dated November 3rd, 2025. All in favor, raise your hand. The agenda item has passed 4 to 0. Moving on to agenda item 2.01, we have public comment. We welcome and value public comment on educational issues and recognize the importance of the opportunity for members of the public to express their thoughts to the school board. It is the policy of the Monroe School District to promote mutual stability, respect and orderly conduct among district employees, parents and the public. We kindly ask that you refrain from comments that violate school district policy. Individuals are asked to limit comments to three minutes. A designated speaker for a group is asked to keep comments to five minutes. If you have a personnel concern, any staff member in the room can help with how to go forward with a complaint about personnel. The board does not respond respond to public comments during the business meeting. Please know that the board silence is neutral. It is neither a signal of agreement or disagreement with the speaker's remarks. The president may interrupt or terminate an individual statement when it is personally directed, abusive, obscene, irrelevant targets, if protected class or exceeds the time limit. As a board president, I will determine the appropriateness of such rulings. When I call your name, please step up to the microphone. Deborah? Deborah, you're really are your name and relationship to the school district.
Brenda, Deborah Carwood used to be on the school board 14 years ago, and I'm here to speak about the resolution about the levy. More importantly, the trans transparency of the district because nothing was on your board docs whatsoever about the resolution. I mean, it said the resolution, but you couldn't leak it on. So that was very disappointing that you didn't have the opportunity to review that. I'm not sure if you board members could. Not sure if you guys are looking at the same board docs that the public looks at, but there was no document. So there was no tax projection rates. Nothing was on there. And as far as the bond, the same thing, hardly anything is on there out there on board docs such as the tax tax projection rates. Nothing's on there at all. I don't know if you still do DA Davidson like we used to use. I'm pretty sure you did because you used them in February. But nothing's out there for the public to look at that document to see how much they're projecting the assessed values to increase, all of that, which is vital. Let alone all of the data that you probably got reports you got at workshops. None of that is on board docs and it should be. Any documents you guys get should be on board docs so the public can see it. The last thing is is that the bond resolution doesn't say 62 cents at the end, not even projected 62 cents. It just has the amount that you guys want to request, but you should be putting out the 62 cents per thousand value. So I'm asking you to do that and to get this information out on the public on board docs.
Thank you, Deborah. Okay, we have business item 3.01, consideration of resolution number 7-2025 levy certification. This is the first reading.
That mic is still on, so I'm hoping there's not feedback. So tonight I am here to present the resolution, the rates, the dollar amounts to the board. For the first time, we haven't had this discussion. The resolution that we're looking at tonight as the first viewing is essentially the beginning of the process for asking our voters to approve a local property gap, a local property tax, and this tax is intended to bridge the gap between what the state funds and the actual cost of our operations and our programs here at Monroe School District. The resolution represents a four-year levy for our taxpayers. It is for calendar years 2027 through 2030 for tax collections. Our local levy currently makes up 15% of our annual budget, which is a significant portion of our budget. The purpose of the levy is to continue funding programs that we already have. They are for staffing to decrease our class size as well as staffing for enhanced programs. We use the budget for professional learning. We use the levy for athletics and activities. We use it for safety and security. We use it for technology, curriculum, grounds and maintenance, early learning and transportation. Those are the key areas where our levy dollars are focused. When we go out to the voters for a levy, we have to consider the levy lid. And the way that the levy lid is determined, that's the amount that the state allows us to go to the voters to ask for. And the levy lid is the lesser of two calculations. The first calculation is our total enrollment. It's a per pupil allocation. So it's our total enrollment times the 2,500 plus IPD since it was established for 2027, the first year of this levy. The IPD, the 2,500 has grown to 4,030 $56, $4,056. So it is our projected enrollment times the 4,056 or the $2.50 per thousand of our assessed valuation. So the state caps us at the lower of those two calculations. So Monroe is calculated at the per pupil rate, which is our projected enrollment times that $4,056 number. So that is how we come up with what we are asking our voters for. The other part of that calculation, aside from enrollment is our assessed valuation. And so the assessed valuation is used to determine the rate per thousand. So the enrollment drives the dollar amount that we ask the voters for. And the assessed valuation and our our assumptions regarding the assessed valuation is what drives the rate per thousand. And so for this four years, I used a very conservative enrollment number. And I used very little enrollment growth over the next four years. And so although that that drives the rate, we want to reach our lid without asking the voters for more than we can collect. And the assessed valuation, our average assessed valuation over the past 10 years is roughly 9%. And our average for the last five years is 5%. And so what we used for our assumptions for assessed valuation, which determines our rate per thousand is we used 8% the first year and we used five and a half for the second year and 5% for the last two years. And what that means is that if our assessed valuation is higher than the 5% or the 8%, then the rate per thousand will go down for our voters. If the enrollment is higher than what we projected, then our dollar amount that we ask for remains the same. If our enrollment is lower than what we projected, then we're capped by the state level and not by what the voters voted for. Does that make sense? Okay. The I think I covered all of that. Oh, when we went out to our voters in 2021, in November of 2021, we presented a resolution to the to the board. And in that resolution, we our rates were $1.71, $1.72, and then $1.73 and $1.73. We were also very conservative with our estimates back in 2021. And our actual rates ranged between $1.31 and $1.51 per thousand. So the assessed valuation went up higher than we had anticipated. So the drops, the the rates went down. What we're trying to do is not to underbid our projections for our community. We're trying to present, if we can, worst case scenario and hope that the assumptions are are less than what the assessed valuation will be and the enrollment numbers are okay. Does that make sense? Our ask, if you go, Jesse, scan down, we're asking for 23,120,511 in calendar year 27. Scroll up just a, that's good right there. 24,369,039 in calendar year 28. 25,672, 25,672,800 in calendar year 29. And then finally, 26,944,399 for calendar year 30. Again, they're all calculating out at $1.73 with the assumptions that I set. And so that's our ask. Our next steps is we're going to be asking for the second read and adoption of this resolution a week from today at the board meeting on November 10th. I then have to submit a plan to OSPI. That was a new rule that started a few years ago. And they have to approve our plan. And we have to create the pro and con committees that will have the opportunity to write their pro and con statements for the voters pamphlet. And then we will be on the ballot in February. And all of this stuff has to be done into the county assessor by December 12th. Any questions?
Always.
Okay.
Can you please tell me what the new rate is going to be again per thousand?
$1.73 is our projection.
And that was the highest rate we had in the current levy, right?
Yes.
What is the expiration date on our current level that we passed?
2026.
Okay, so this is a continuation in the programs that you mentioned, basically, and that was the big push for last time they ceased to exist because the state does not fund them. All right, and we looked at $1.73 and we ended up doing $1.51. So basically saved 20 cents on the per thousand, which is basically on a half million dollar house. That's 100 bucks a year. And then range that up. At the best, it was $1.31. That's 40 40 cents on it. So that's another.
That was the first year.
That's it. That's a couple hundred, few hundred bucks a year. So we're saving our, so we're basically under promising and over delivering, making sure we're going to factor conservative and we're going to make sure and save you where we can for our taxpayers.
That's our objective.
Perfect. And then there was another question. Oh, and then this is a question for our superintendent. I would love for you to talk because you and I had a conversation this week about or last week about kind of our technique coming up. And I know Jesse's been working on a lot of that of like, we have some rounds with some technology needs that are included in this levy. Can you can you speak to that need coming up as well? Because I know that for us, for the public, and I appreciate Deborah coming up and expressing need for communication with the community. I think it's important for to understand some of the needs that are coming up as well for our EPNO and what that means, that what goes away or what we cannot provide for our students if we do not have these levies.
Yeah, you bet. So if there's anything specific, excuse me, for Brendan and I for for next Monday as well, please let us know. And we can bring whatever you need back to the table at that meeting. But one of the areas that we would be increasing spending on with this levy would be for technology replacement. I'm not sure when the capital, the technology levy, when those dollars were expended, was it been a couple of years ago?
It was a six year. It was a six year capital levy and the dollars were spent as we as we went. So we got $1.2 million a year for six years and we pretty much spent it as we received it.
And then we've also spent to continue. So that got us to 2020. And then since then, we've basically, we used a lot of S R dollars, I believe, to help us with a lot of the needs to for our one-to-one student ratio when we had that for COVID. So every student had a laptop. Is that correct?
We used FCC dollars.
FCC. And then we had the big issue because they didn't, they didn't, they didn't give us the parameters correctly, correct? So that's what's good. That's what so the capital tech levy is what got us from 2014 to 2020. The FCC dollars got us to basically where we are today. This is what's going to help us to continue moving forward, correct? Okay, thank you.
You bet.
So these dollar amounts that you mentioned, we are asking the maximum amount that we can, from what I understand.
We are asking the maximum amount that we can relative to the enrollment that I projected. And essentially, right now for calendar year 26, we use last year's enrollment, which was 5,650. That includes all pro all traditional building, ALEs, running start, TTK. It includes all of our enrollment. So for the levy projections, I went from 5,600 to 5,700. And I use that flat rate for the four years.
So why are we asking for the maximum?
So that we can meet the rising costs of our current operations and programs.
So we expect those costs to require the maximum amount?
In addition to the technology requests and the growing needs, yes. We have spent over the past two years, we have spent $4 million of our fund balance, meeting some of those needs. And using the one-time resources that have been in our fund balance for 2324, we used a little over a million. And in 2425, the year that we just closed, we used just shy of 3 million of our fund balance for ongoing costs and and costs associated with areas that we have no other resources for.
And as a reminder, while we did that, it was at the same time that we were drastically reducing district office administration. So we cut about a million dollars out of our district office administrative staff to be more in alignment with 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 our enrollment. So we've been digging into the fund balance. We've also been making adjustments to our spending as well.
So then this estimated a maximum $1.73 per thousand of property value. And we say, last time we went down to $1.51. So just to help me understand, if we are hoping that it will be lower, is that just assuming property values go up? It's not that the total, the total dollar amount asked is still the same.
The total dollar amount, once you pass this resolution, that is all we are able to ask for, regardless of our student population. Once it goes to the voters and when it passes, regardless of what our assessed valuation does, the cost per household remains, may fluctuate based on their rate per thousand. But the total amount that the district received is capped on what the voters approved. We do not get more because of assessed valuation. The max that we can get is what the voters approved.
Yeah, I was just more referring to the this number decreasing from $1.73, hopefully down to the 150s. That that's just only because of the property value increase.
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I ask that question in plain English in a different way, just to make sure I understand it?
Yes, sir.
So so let's put some some real life to this. Let's say my property values, I not, I'm hoping they don't fluctuate crazy like they did during COVID. Let's just say they fluctuate. Okay. And in 2028, my property values increased by $50,000. I'm not being taxed more money on that because my property values went up. I'm being taxed at the same rate because I'm not paying more in school taxes for this levy, even though my property value drastically increased because the dollar amount asked and all my neighbors went up too, or whatever in Monroe. I'm not being taxed more dollars on this because the the flat rate is already there. We're just splitting the pie more evenly. Is that correct?
It's correct. If your house goes up $50,000, if the average percentage is at or above what I projected on this, then it remains close to $1.73 for your current household value. If the average is higher than what I projected, then your rate per thousand will go down per your newly assessed value of your home.
And then let me ask it a different way. Let's and the other part of it is, let's say we have another 20,000 residents move into Monroe. And we've had lots of building going on. That would also drop the rate per person because essentially we're slicing more pizzas, more pieces of the same pizza.
Yes.
So we have tons. I live up Chain Lake Road. We have tons of houses that have gone in and it all has fluctuated at different times. And as Monroe continues to grow, and it is, then that would also change the rate that individuals pay
Yes, sir.
because of the number of homes that are in there as well. Okay. Thank you.
There's another discrete piece that Brenda already articulated this, and I will have an exact number for you. But of course, everything's getting more expensive every year. And that's why there's a, I think you mentioned the IPD each year that the amount that we the cost per student amount goes up every year to reflect the increase in the cost of living, et cetera. We're not so our overall levy amount is going to go up to account for those things. And then what we're not totally sure of, because we don't have a crystal ball to predict exactly how much things will go up, we will have a little bit more discretionary money with this levy amount. And I already covered part of it. Part of it is just technology replacement. And some other areas of need for us are instructional materials, adoption. It's very low right now relative to the needs in our school district. So that'll take a chunk. And then we have a real interest in improving some of the things that we're doing currently for safety and security. Notably, we're looking at either increasing our SRO presence or security presence, and that's something that we're talking about. And then there's some other unfunded mandates that seem to happen every year at the state level, but we are required to improve our alert systems for for emergency events. Such as, I think I might have brought the or Kelly might have brought this notion of these badges that you press that can get to get help into your classroom or to go straight to Monroe PD if we need, if we don't have time to call 911, et cetera. That's something that we need to spend money on. That's not funded by the state right now that we would include in this levy as well. And then a couple other or one more area is just our grounds and maintenance. It's a very small amount. But like last spring, just to keep up with what we needed to keep up with on our grounds, we had our our people come in on the weekends to work overtime to to and this is because we had some phone calls from community members saying, hey, what's going on with with the grounds at this particular place? So we know that that's costing us a little bit more as well. And then one one last item, last year, you might remember, we one thing that we haven't done, I don't know the last time Brenda that we increased building budgets at the school level. It's been quite a while, I believe. Last year, for the first time, we gave dollars for school improvement planning on a per FTE basis. We did not this school year because we missed on our enrollment projections. So we had a little less discretion with how we spend our dollars. We want to put a small amount back to the buildings, increase their their budgets, give them dollars attached to their school improvement planning as well. Again, it's like $150,000 per year or something. So it's a small amount, but those are some of the increased costs for us. So we want to add some budget to as well.
So we have one question on that one. Sorry, the the grounds crew, we, how many buildings do we have on in the Monroe School District?
Adam.
12. Well, we still have to maintain the building. And Adam, how many people do we have on that? We have 12 buildings.
Three grounds. Warehouse. He also helps a little bit in grounds, delivery mail run, and then we have four maintenance.
We have three grounds people, one delivery person and five maintenance people. So we don't even have one person per building to even deal with that. So that 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 tells me a lot right there. And we only really have, we don't even have the actual grounds crew for half, half our number of buildings. Okay.
So I'm looking at the total projections here. Where did we land on the cost per thousand for the bond? Is it still at 62 cents? Is that the?
First year was 62 cents. Yes.
So just to share what I'm looking at, and this is from the Davidson Bond Planning sheet that was shared. So currently in 2025, we're paying $2.17. And then with this, and then 2026 projected at $2.12 total. And with this, both the 62 cents for the bond and $1.73 for the EPNO, $2.95. So that's a pretty big jump. And I'm just, you know, thinking through how will we convince the voters slash, you know, what are we going to do if only one of these pass? What if neither pass? So I don't know. Can we just talk through those scenarios? And if there's any opportunity to make it easier for the voters to say, yes, we should explore those.
Can I ask a question about your math on that? Are you adding the $1.73 for the new levy on top of our current levy dollars though? Because that one's replacing it.
No, our current levy dollars are going to go till 2036. Oh, sorry. Sorry, not levy, but our current bond is going to go for 26. So 62.
You're talking about the, I thought you were talking about the current levy because that one expires and what we're proposing is new. Okay, that makes sense. I thought you were adding on top of the current levy as well. Yes.
No, the current levy goes from 1.51 to $1.73 plus 59 cents for our current bond plus the 62 cents for
Yes, okay, thank you.
For the 295.
Take a take a stab at that. So Brenda, please fill in where I miss. Couple of things. One, remembering that this is a replacement levy. So I'll really start with, first of all, bonds are very difficult to pass. I think in the last 10 years, I think I sent you an email. I looked at the last 10 years, I think maybe 29% of the bonds in the state have passed in the last 10 years. And since COVID, it's even lower than that. It's mostly close 19, 20% maybe. So they're very difficult, but it doesn't mean that we shouldn't go out and and give it a try, right? If that doesn't pass, we're going to have to come and talk about, okay, what's what's next? Do we run it again? Do we make some adjustments based on what people are telling us? As a board, you might decide not to run a bond again. But we still have to address especially the maintenance issues that are just deferred over time. You'd have some options there. You might look at a capital facility levy versus a bond. So that's 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 one part of it. If the if the levy does not pass, I mean, this happened to y'all before my time and you ran it two more times or just one more time?
Just one more time.
One more time and then you passed it. Obviously, we'd have to sit down and discuss, all right, well, obviously we'd be running again. The question would be would be when? I haven't been in the district that ultimately failed. I've been in a district that failed twice and then passed passed the third time. But we'd be making drastic adjustments to to our spending. We would be having a riff, a significant number of of staff because we wouldn't. We would be um having to riff a significant number of of staff because we wouldn't be able to make payroll otherwise. Um, obviously, we've got a list of, uh, let's see, nine percent of the levy goes towards athletics and activities. Would have to stop offering those things that we currently offer. Most of it is salaries and benefits, though. I think eighty-five percent of our overall spending in the district is on salaries and benefits. So I I don't think we have this, you might, how many staff roughly do you think that we fund with the bond cert staff teachers?
I haven't calculated it for um this levy and bonds yet. I'm working on those numbers, but I'll have them by next week.
Fill in the blanks there, Brenda, sorry.
Blanks are, is that every calendar year crosses two fiscal years. So if this levy were to fail in February and then fail a second time in calendar year twenty-six, that means we would have no E P and O levy for calendar year twenty-seven. So that means if everything stays exactly the same as it is for this year, then for twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would have to cut close to ten million dollars to um cover the cost of that levy that we don't have anymore. And then in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, if we passed a levy in twenty-seven that picked up in twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we would have to cut ten million dollars more to cover the second half of that twenty-seven levy in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And then we would, if we had a levy that passed in twenty-seven, would be able to restore in future years, but that would be a huge cut for Monroe School District over a two-year span. And um, that would probably undo a lot of the progress that we've made over the last several years.
Sean, in our one-on-one last week, you and I talked about the percentage of the overall budget that the levy, current levy funds, was it fourteen percent?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent. And then Dan, real quick, I'm just calling out some numbers here because I'm curious. What is the, do you happen to off the top of your head roughly, what is the current number of staff members we have outside of substitutes uh on in the district? Is it like nine hundred? Okay. So let's say seven hundred. I did some math on this because that's the scary number times point one five. If it funds fifteen percent of the overall budget, then it would fund a, not perfectly, but apparently fifteen percent of our staffing as well. If that means we would have to riff fifteen percent of our staff, that's a hundred and five people. That sucks. I'm just going to be blunt. And so I know that that it's hard because there's a lot of people really scared with finances right now in our, in our country. And there's a whole lot of questions about that. But I had a conversation with an individual in the coffee shop this week. I didn't even have a conversation. I didn't even know her. And she found us on the board and we, my wife brought it up in the conversation and she, I just said, look, I said, you, we spend more money on coffee in a year, the average person, than we actually do in our annual taxes that go towards schools. So it sounds really blunt, but I'm just going to be real honest. I'm like, i- if we say no to this, and I understand it's hard for people, I'm not, I'm not negating that. I'm just saying we spend more money on junk food and crap than we do on our students. And I, and I don't want to tax our voters, I, I, because I'm paying these taxes too. I don't want to tax our voters more than we need to. And I think that we've done the best that we can because we're not in the shape that many districts are in the same E S D that we are. We're not looking to have to fire our superintendent because we can't figure out how to manage our budget or don't have a strategic plan or we're upside down in our finances. We actually have money in the bank. And that's not the case of most school districts because we take seriously, we refunded our last uh bond or we, we were able to refund, you know, by re, re um. So we're refinancing, thank you, our bond and gave our our voters three million dollars back. And we're doing twenty cents on the the hundred thousand or the on the, on the thousand dollars. So between a hundred and two hundred and fifty bucks, depending on the value of your home, back to our voters. So we're trying to do our best on this. And I know that also that we have a lot of people who are on fixed incomes. And so a couple hundred bucks a year, it means everything and that's a lot. And I I don't negate that. I'm just saying that we we get caught between a rock and a hard place of saying, okay. For for a lot of people, we spend a whole lot more money on soda, beer and coffee than we do on our, on our students. And that's, that's the reality that I come to when it's actual just brass tacks of a few hundred dollars is a lot of money. A few hundred dollars over a year is actually not that significant for most people. And I'm not saying it's not a lot of money. It is. I'm just saying when it's spread out over that long. I'm just saying I would choose my kids over coffee and beer and soda than I would. So anyway, just a thought on that one. And that means, you know, losing a pot, potentially a hundred, over a hundred staff members. You know, I know that's a range, but those are the realities of the different things that have to cut. And maybe it's not a hundred staff members because we could find other areas to cut. But if you're saying fifteen percent across the board on different things and staffing is part of that because we commit to have lower class size than what the state allocates for us. And that's what we're trying to do. And that's part of the reason our student numbers are increasing in their academics and and uh and their attendance because we can have lower class sizes. So those are just some things that I've been reflecting on in the process in our, in our, our conversations, so.
It'd probably be helpful for us to also bring back, and we can bring it back on a Monday, just the prototypical school funding model, so you can actually see what, what does the state say? You know, this is how schools look through our eyes. And then what, what, what do we put on top of that to give you an idea of the kinds of things that we would be removing without the levy as well?
And that would be so uh important to include. I was just at the high school and asked to speak at an early childhood learning class or in one. And a lot of the questions were around bonds and levies. And um, I just reiterated what I have heard for years, bonds are for building, levies are for learning. And um, kind of talked about my own experience as a Monroe graduate and kind of the levy. So then I went back and did a little more research afterward and even reached out to Holly. Uh, I love that we provide a, an annual community guide to the budget because I actually went through there and confirmed some of the information that I shared with students. But I think it's so important that um, and so special that we have such a great communications department as well. Uh, the first time we went through this with a levy while I've been on the board was such a great learning experience. Um, I love looking at the list of everything that it covers outside of basic education, um, because it is so important. I think of my own three children and how I have one who just made the basketball team at Hidden River. Super exciting. He just found out he's a starter. Didn't expect that. Yeah. And um, and this helps cover those. I have another one who just applied for Snow Isle today. So exciting to know that we have so many great supports. And then my third, who's hanging out and she's in band now. And I just think, um, how special is it that we have those opportunities, not only for my own students, um, and my own children, but all of our students? Um, and I even touched on four of the current school board directors have students in the Monroe School District. And we are personally affected and can attest to the work that happens in the Monroe School District. And so it makes me really excited to see the work continue to happen and um to see how we can better support our, our students always. And yeah, if we can get that list, though, that'd be amazing. Yeah, I asked James, James wasn't here actually when we were passing or we were working on that levy information. And so I think it's uh really helpful to have that list of outside of basic education.
So Brenda, you mentioned you're very uh conservative with the numbers. Was that in your total dollar ask or is that just in your dollar seventy-three per thousand calculation?
Um, I was conservative in our enrollment projections. And like I said, I just increased us fifty F T E and kept it flat after that. And I was under average with, that drives the dollar amount. And I was under average in the um A V, the assessed valuation that I'm projecting. And that's what drives the rate per thousand. If, like I said, if I went with a higher assessed valuation, the rate per thousand would of course go down. And that would look better on paper, but it might not end up being that. And it could potentially be higher. And so um, it's better to project the assessed valuation lower so that rate goes down if it's different, rather than going up after the voters have approved it.
Yeah, and and I totally hear that. But I recall we were also very conservative on the bond estimate as well by using like half a percent higher on the, on the rate. And then even an interest rate for just cut again. I don't know, are these compounding um being too conservative for, because it's hitting the voters with a much larger number than what we believe is going to be actual for at least the dollar per uh the assessed value?
Um, if we, uh, the assessed valuation, I worked with um Corion as far as what a reasonable assessed valuation would be. And um, I initially started with the average ten year. But he reminded me that um, we were going through some very unusual times and that our housing increases would most likely go down per year. We wouldn't, our homes wouldn't raise in value as much as they have in the past several years. And um, so we compromised. And like I said, we went with eight percent the first year for twenty twenty-six, the seven rates. And then we dropped down to five and a half and then down to five by the last year. Just again, because we don't know and we want to err on the right side of the equation rather than the wrong side of the equation.
Go ahead, thanks.
Any more questions for Brenda?
Actually, the questions I've had were, were answered about the assessed value and the minimums and additional enrollment. So uh, you'd address those. Uh, there was a question earlier about transparency. Are we in compliance with the progression of notices for a levy like this? Would it be in February in terms of filing and notice to the public?
We have to file with our county assessor by December twelfth. Um, we focused for the past several months on the bond. And although there was a very brief discussion when Corey presented his table back in February, um, we haven't really had conversations regarding the levy until, quite frankly, tonight. And um, because we didn't want to confuse the two issues. We focused on the bond and we focused on our facility committee. And we focused on the, the contractors that we had helping us with that process. And then once that resolution was passed for the bond, we switched our focus to the levy so that we could start communicating both of them together.
I do remember you discussing this or bringing it to our attention. Um, I don't remember what month, but you did let us know that this was something that was going to uh come up and we needed to approach it at that time, your appropriate time.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, it is four forty-five P M. And tonight's meeting is adjourned.